Commissioner Frill.
Present.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nicholson.
Here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Wyoming statute 16-4-405.
So moved.
Which one is the requirement that you're addressing that we discussed there? Is it an employee issue?
I believe we have legal advice. Do we have personnel? I think.
Is it legal advice concerning litigation? Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll call us back to order. It's pretty much 5:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Consent agenda items are approved. The next item is under contracts, agreements and resolutions. There is a proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Casper and the Natrona County Board of County Commissioners regarding the joint distribution of opioid settlement funds. Commissioner North, you asked that this be put, taken off consent, so I would be happy to give you the first opportunity to make comment on it.
Thank you. I personally believe that this is something that any money that is divvied out according to this needs to be something that's voted on by the entire commission, not just by two people in a committee that's, after reading through the MOU, I don't believe that that comes back to the commission because of the way it's written in both Section 1, miscellaneous, under Section B and C. To me, that is just the opposite of that, and I don't believe that that's something that we should relinquish that authority. I think that's something that we need to be directly involved in, and while I understand that working with the city would give us a little bit more bang for the buck, I don't necessarily believe that that's always in the best interest of the county or the citizens of the county, and that's the reason why I believe that we need to postpone this and look at this MOU a little closer.
Other discussion, Commissioner Freel.
Well, my take on this is we've been talking about this for several years. When this money started coming in for the opioid between the city and the county, we've had discussions of pulling this money together to do exactly what you just said, more bang for the buck. This opioid money is pretty much tailored down to going back to as far as treatment goes, and there are only a few things that it can be used for, and so in my personal opinion, I think a group effort using all the funds combined together is going to get a lot more done for the citizens of the county. So just because the county's getting a share and the city's getting a share, at the end of the day, it's the people of the county that are going to benefit from these funds, and by putting them all together, I think you can get a lot more done as opposed to trying to do a couple programs individually. That's my take on it.
Other discussion?
I think we should table this until January.
Commissioner Mills.
So, I see where Commissioner North is, what he's looking at. However, if you look at a few sections up, it talks, it addresses the RFP, comes back to the city and county for approvals. I don't think the county on its own and the city on its own would have better results working individually than they would combining the funds and doing this in a cooperative manner for the citizens of this county. I think the citizens will receive a much better service of those funds by having that co-venture. So, I'm in favor of the MOU.
So, I am also in favor of entering into the MOU at this time. The suggestion to table it just came up just seconds ago, was not discussed at our work session where we discussed in some detail concerns. I haven't heard from our incoming Commissioner-elect Coats that he would prefer this to be postponed, but we have had a draft in front of us for quite some time. I would go over some of the facts with the public in this commission. First of all, it's a short term, December 1st through June 30th of next year, or until all settlement funds are expended, whichever comes first. Furthermore, either party can terminate it on 30 days' written notice. So if, for example, a, the committee, which would be five people, be two city council members and two county commissioners and a third party, individual from the community, I would assume, if a majority of this commission didn't like what two of those commissioners or that committee were doing, they could give 30 days' notice to terminate this MOU. I don't think that's going to happen. I think that a lot of time and energy has gone into this, and I think it is very clear, and I disagree with Commissioner North, it's very clear that the MOU creates a committee that very simply puts together a request for proposal. Again, that committee will be two of the commissioners of the county plus three others and submit the proposed RFP to the city and the county for approval. So we'll have a chance to review and approve or reject the request for proposal. In addition, the committee receives, is to receive and review proposals and quote "make recommendations" to funding to the city and the county. It's not making decisions, it's making recommendations for decisions, and again, that's another level at which the, this entire Board of County Commissioners would be able to review and approve proposals, and I think that it is inaccurate to suggest otherwise. I think that we will get more bang for the buck. I think that the county, as I discussed at the work session, lacks some bandwidth and some capacity and some expertise to put together this kind of request for proposal and to be on its own. These commissioners at this table and our incoming Commissioner Casey Coats need to remember that we don't represent just some of the people living in the county. We represent all the citizens of Natrona County and the City of Casper, the City of Mills and the towns, and so I think for all those reasons, it's a no-brainer to move forward with this MOU and start trying to actually make an improvement on our local opioid issues. It may or may not be an epidemic here in Natrona County, but for us to table this issue after all the time and energy that's been spent on this, I think is close to a dereliction of duty. So with that said, Commissioner Mills.
Just as one point too, this has been a long process to get to this point with the MOU between the city and county. City is on Item 7 in their consent agenda tonight. Not that we follow what they do, but we are two entities trying to work together. They are voting on this tonight as well.
Mr. Commissioner, I do have a question. Who are the two commissioners to be on this board?
Been appointed yet?
Are they appointed or do we run for office? Because I'd like, I would like to be on that as one of the two commissioners.
Yeah, I think that the appropriate thing to do would be to bring that up in the near future after this is entered into, see if there are just two individuals or if we need to vol and told a second commissioner. There might be five commissioners that want to be on it. So I think that we can address this at our next meeting or in January, but I think we should do it sooner rather than later. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes three to two. No other contracts, agreements and resolutions on the agenda, so at this time, we will open it up for public comment. There is five minutes provided. It's not necessary for you to speak all five minutes unless you really feel you'd like to. Do we have any public comment tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Charles Putman. My home is 28525 West Highway 2026 Natrona, which is about a mile west of the Haystack Solar Farm site. So I wanted to speak about that just a bit tonight. I know there's another meeting for the 21st. I didn't realize it when I headed downtown tonight, but I thought I'll take the advantage to address you a couple of times because in reality, I had a lot more than five minutes worth of material that I wanted to try to boil down to five minutes. I wanted to, I think I'll save, wanted to talk to you about, about my own personal, the personal impact on me and on my land, and save that for you a little bit later, and because I heard you say something very important tonight, that what you guys discuss is for all the people in Natrona County. I feel like the Shell Energy Companies, like Haystacks LLC is, it's a brass plate company supposedly backed by a foreign corporation, which in turn is backed by international monies. Okay, they'll entice you with sales tax income, promises of jobs, growth in the county, and they'll tell us solar farms are progress in the inevitable future, that we have no choice, it's coming, might as well accept it. But in reality, these are not viable profit generating operations. They'll leave the county holding the financial bag when it comes to emergency planning and dealing with spent hazardous materials like batteries and solar panels. This is not a good deal for the county, not a good deal for the rural area where the Haystacks is proposed. So I took a quick business look at the facility, the 199 megawatts, that would show a gross electric sales income of 6.6 million per year. That's on an investment of $155 million, which says the rate of return gross is 4.2% versus a rate of return which should be around 25 or 35% for a viable operation. So what makes this viable? The draw of the investment tax credit and eventually subsidies. This is the only reason that these facilities can exist, and they don't have extra money laying around to help improve things in the county with. Typically, these companies are flipped three times before they ever produce a kilowatt, not our concern, and I know you gentlemen are probably aware of these things, but the lack of income viability in an organization with limited liability points the need for substantial bond to cover the cost of abandonment or the end-of-life shutdown. An end-of-life on these projects is not when things wear out, it's when the tax credits and subsidies end, and this can happen rapidly in changing political environments like we see. So what is a reasonable bond? I began to look at that, and of course, it needs to be looked at more than what I can do, even though I am an engineer, but Harvard Business Review guidelines estimate cleanup of a solar farm of this particular size is roughly $54 million. I'm sorry, am I up? Oh, somebody said some, the recycle cost of the panels alone is about $30 each, or in our case, 348,000 panels are $10.5 million. That's just the panels. We're not even talking about batteries yet. So does the county want to take on the exposure if this project meets retirement or abandonment while in the hands of a shell limited liability company, unless you have in hand already something on the order of a $50 million bond? Once again, I throw that number out there, it's what I've researched, but I'll talk later, hopefully in the next meeting, about the need to have a better application and emergency plan, management plan that includes the, what those bonds should be, somebody else other than myself. So since I've got 55 seconds left, I do want to talk about the application calling for the Casper landfill as disposal site for faulty and broken panels. The National Renewable Energy Laboratory, the NREL, solar lifetime study states that the initial failure rate of newly installed panels averages 20% over the first five years. In the long term, it's much, much lower, it's 0.5%, but initially, those first five years, you have shipping breakage, installation breakage, and other breakage and manufacturing problems. In our case, that's approximately 70,000 panels or an average of 14,000 panels per year to the landfill over the first five years, at a recycle cost of $30 each, that's $420,000 per year. Does the county want to make the needed investment to be able to take on the cost of dealing with these quantities of hazardous materials in the landfill, and where would Haystacks get the money to pay for this? And I'll, about six seconds over there, so I'll leave you with that, and I thank you for your time.
Sir, did we get, I didn't hear your last name clearly?
I'm sorry, Putman, Charles Putman, P-U-T-M-A-N.
Great, and where's your property or where do you live?
About a mile west of this Haystacks site. We're Pine Mountain Ranch, just west of Natrona.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, if you don't mind?
I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, just real quick, that Harvard study that you referenced, if you have it handy, can you send me the link to that or something like that? I'd really appreciate it.
Would you, would you send it to just Michelle so she can distribute it to all of us?
All right, I'll make a note to do that.
Or both.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I have a, I have a question.
Well, certainly.
I was told today that their bond is $350,000.
I would say that that's probably correct at this point.
I mentioned to the person it should be at least $5 million, and now you're saying $50 million.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, that's objects for discussion. That's what you guys with the real facts and with real engineering studies, not this empty proposal.
$350,000 was ridiculous when I heard that.
It's nothing. Looking at their tax returns or their annual reports, the .002% comes up to 700 and something dollars on $350,000. So I assumed that that money, since that's the first time they've had any assets reported in the state, was some sort of a bond money.
Check out and see what, what kind of damage was caused down there in California with one of these solar panel farms.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Other public comment? Good evening.
Judy Jones, 335 North Eight Mile. Okay, I'm going to take you back since I was on Glenwood this morning, and I talked about a conditional use permit. We have required a conditional use permit for anything that was used as a non-conforming use for the last 22 years. What changed? How are these guys managing to bypass a local commission as yourselves to keep check on what they're doing? I'd like an answer to that, I really would. I had to drain all the fluids out of my cars. I had to move my batteries out of my cars. I had to do a berm because they were worried about what was going to happen to the aquifer. And now we're going to let 66,000 holes be drilled into the land right behind my house. Kind of feel like this is personal, but I'm not too worried about that because I have some really good ideas and plans on how to take care of it. As far as I know, the Kilt bought that land about the same time that this commission learned of this proposed farm. 7/31/24, look it up. It's kind of weird. These guys are five minutes into their, five months into their permit, and it's been passed by the planning and zoning. I suggest you look back on planning and zoning's state requirements, they're in violation. 501, 503, 505. Now, you guys are supposed to be watching out for the health and safety of the residents. I don't see this happening. We've got 500 families that live up on Pine Mountain. Then we have me and Tammy that are right next door to this, and Birch, Kelly Birch, and his next door neighbor that has a daughter with epilepsy. Last year alone, I can count four storms that just about, that's on my roof, it's made of tin. Anything less would have not survived. I would like to see these guys get, in fact, I'm going to demand that they get a conditional use permit so you guys can keep track of them. I don't like the state law being the scapegoat on this. I think it's up to you guys to protect us. Isn't that what we hired you for? Isn't that what we hired you for? I just did a water test of my, my water well. I think they should have to get a test of that water well on that property. I know that the Kilt also haul water and soil. So they're going to rape us three ways. I'm not real happy about that either. I hear our planning and zoning guys, one went with us. And I think him the nut, he did a good job of listening. And the other three didn't give a shit. I'd like to see Hal Hutchinson fired as of the first of the year. He's been on the board too long, and he's got himself drunk on power. But anyway, there you go. I'm just saying that there, there's over 500 families out there that rely on their wells. And 260 million gallons of water time, 5,000, what is it? 5,750 gallons per tanker will take them 45,000 truckloads of water to get into the facility. Then where it goes, who knows? Poison, or Goldeneye is just up the road. I took some photos of that. They're going to poison our land, guys. That is also a migration corridor. I took some pictures of some big paw prints today. That means there's cats out there too, big cats. So, anyway, thank you.
Other public comment?
Good evening. Jason Knope, 4760 Ross Ridge Road. I kind of want to just come to point out a little bit of a gap in some of our septic systems, small wastewater systems between the county and the state. So we get a lot of calls helping out with a lot of the county systems. Everything's on septics. So engineers have to get involved in certain things that happen out on the land. But when I get calls for like individual houses that the septic systems have failed, usually it's a little bit different than the normal case where you get a building permit, septic gets designed, house gets built. When it fails, there's already a family living in that house. So there's no way for the county to expedite reviews when, so it's kind of complex. So when the system requires a pump, it works faster than five minutes or slower than 60 minutes, an engineer has to get involved. So the county has to get an engineer involved. So then the engineer gets involved, designs it, fills out the application with the county, which is the same application with the state. The county doesn't have home rule over those situations, and usually a lot of these failed systems have those situations. So there's no way for the county to work with the state to get the expedite that review. The state has a 60-day review period for small wastewater systems. But sometimes the state people, depending on which county you're in and who's regulating, will speed that review up depending on their mood and how busy they are. But it would be nice if the county maybe would reach out to the state and see if there's a way, because there's kind of a cross between who has home rule in some of these small wastewater systems. It'd be nice to be able somehow get some sort of agreement to expedite some of these reviews on systems that have failed when you have residents of families living in these houses, and they need that to get moving. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up to you guys and would be willing to work with you guys.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Have you reached out to the state? Do you, because you obviously know the area, the issue really well. Have you tried to make contact with them yet?
I have, and they always agree that it's an issue, and they would like to move it up on their list, and they'll get to it. And then they say, well, like, can you get back to me on the signature? And that slows it down another week. And it's like, I would like the review to start while we're filling in these little itty-bitty questionable things on these applications because one regulator wants the home property owner to sign it, one regulator wants the leasing to sign it, one regulator, you know. So if it kicks, kicked back to me for just a simple signature, which then takes me another whatever to go get that, that slows that down another week. And so I think if there's some way for the communication to work together, not really coming from me, but there's kind of this home rule, who reviews, who doesn't review, you know, because I called Ruth with this county health department and them, and you know, they're doing the best they can. You know, once, once state takes home rule, then they can only just call and bug like I do. And it would just be nice if the county maybe would be proactive and say this would be beneficial for everybody if we could come up with some way to say that failed systems are allowed to be expedited in the review process. And I, I just feel like it would come, I, I talk to the state all the time, and so it just depends on who you get higher up on the ladder.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring you guys' attention.
Well, I appreciate that, and that's really part of our job, is to make those kinds of calls and those contacts.
Right.
We, we can get in touch with, with them for sure. And I know Ruth is retiring.
Yeah, and then you hired a new lady, and I've met, I know her.
Yeah, so in any event, I, I think we can do that because I think that'd be a service on those expedited situations.
And it doesn't have to be done today, but I think it's something that would benefit if we can get something that everybody can work together on failed systems.
Yeah, and Commissioner Mill mentioned that with our WCCA meeting coming up, and then with some of the lobbying we do down in the legislature, if we need to try to push for multiple counties to get behind, to really get the state to move, that'd be a good opportunity. That's a good lobbying organization for exactly those kinds of things. But we can make the calls ourselves.
Okay.
Jason, now is this a state statute or is this a?
So each county's different, like you go to like, I just did one for Medicine Bowes Wind Farm in Carbon County, I think it's Carbon County, yeah, Carbon. Well, they don't have home rule, right? So it goes directly with the state.
Right.
So I'm dealing with Dennis in that district, which is different than this district.
Right.
And so each district has a different person, and each person, human nature has a different way of reviewing things, so you know what I mean?
Just like the building department, I understand that, I understand that completely.
I understand how there might be a beneficial with us because we do have a county health where Carbon doesn't, where maybe we can spurhead that, and maybe it does benefit Carbon County later if we can somehow get the state to understand that there needs to be a quicker process with the failed systems.
Yeah, and I, speaking from experience, I know how frustrating that is when you have a failed system and you have to figure out an option.
Usually it's a gentleman with a family and kids and a wife, and someone's nagging, and no one can go to the bathroom, and you know.
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, no, I have experienced that personally, so I understand that very well. What I'm getting at though is that are these, are we working strictly off what the state statutes say, and Natrona County is following those? Or are they regulations within?
So there's an MOU between the county, I believe, and the state on how the home rule works?
Right, and, and I'm not, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not really asking about that. I understand how, I understand.
Your period and all the review time is maybe statutes.
That's the part that I'm asking about, is where, where do those numbers originate?
So they're each, depends on which, which chapter you're in. So this would be, we're talking chapter 25 with small wastewater, so chapter 25 allows 60-day review.
So this is D U Q requirements?
Yep.
Okay, so that's where we need to work on getting this.
This county does not technically have a
Right.
period of review. They usually just get on it pretty quick. I have never really had issues with their review period on in most of the stuff.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where we need to focus our efforts on. And if it's a D U Q regulation, then that's what we need, that's what we need to work on.
Because once home rule takes over, then like Ruth has no control.
Right, no.
So now that we have to follow this, then the state statutes of 60 days.
And so that, that's where I, that's what I was asking. I just wanted to make sure that we were moving in the right direction, that we were looking at the D U Q regulations, and we can work with our legislators and some of the others down in Cheyenne, see if we can get things moving to provide something.
But if I start to push too hard and people, regulators start to see my name, then they throw my applications at the bottom of the pile. So sometimes it's nice just to reach out to other people that have interest in the same benefit.
Well, and there's, there's a lot of counties that they've run into the same type problems because we have similar soil types and everything else. And when a septic system fails, sometimes it gives you plenty of warning, and sometimes it doesn't. And so, no, I understand that completely. So, all right, appreciate it, Jason.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Terry Wangler, Casper. I think you have my address, 1427 Horn Church. I was just kind of curious, have you heard anything about when the hearing's going to be about this gravel pit, you know, up on Colts Road? Is it going to be in Casper or in Cheyenne or?
You're referring to the Wyoming Supreme Court oral argument? I believe that's January 16th.
Excuse me, where is it going to be held?
Oh, sorry, Cheyenne. I, I don't think that there's any likelihood that they would move it up to, to Casper. They, it's very rare that they move it outside the court in Cheyenne.
Just gravel pit here, it's the Teton County issue.
Yeah, I understand.
So they're having it down in Cheyenne where the Supreme Court always has their hearings. There isn't a hearing set yet with the gravel pit on this mountain.
It hasn't been set yet.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird.
You're welcome.
That's a good.
That's all I was wondering.
It's at 4 o'clock on the 16th of January.
Okay.
In Cheyenne.
Thank you.
Yep. Not seeing any other public comment unless there's other public comment. All right, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Laird.
Due to a conversation we had earlier, I'm looking at this document that Tony Locke presented to us on 11/13/2024, entitled Leadership, Management, and Oversight Issues, Casper, Natrona County International Airport. And his final paragraph, I'll just read a short part of it, Mr. Nicolason, because your name isn't even mentioned here, but it is mentioned. If the county commissioners, as the FAA grant assurance sponsors as well as the elected officials responsible for the airport and responsible to the people of Natrona County, do not address these issues by reforming the airport board, et cetera, et cetera, then the county commissioners need to resign. Now, that bothers me, and I think that publicly we should address those issues. Now, I have a copy of that document that was submitted by Tony Locke, and I have a copy of the letter submitted by the Casper International, Natrona County International Airport. They're both public documents, is that true, Madam County Attorney? So I'm going to give these to the journalist because I think he's entitled to see them. I don't like the idea of telling him that he has to wait and put a FOIA request that would put journalists out of business and reporters out of business. So I'd like to address that. I think if that's the case, we should revoke that issue. If they come here and they want documents that have been put into the public record, I think we should give them so that the people of the, of Casper, Natrona County, Wyoming can read them for themselves. But if anybody has some legal objection to me giving these to the journalist, I'll hear that. But if not, I'm going to give him both of these documents tonight. I have nothing further.
Commissioner Laird, just for clarification, is the letter from the airport board the one that's signed, the version that was received by the county commissioners yesterday?
Yes, I got it from Michelle. It's from Tatum Havlicek, and it was dated December 2nd, 2024. And you read actually part of it, I think.
But it's, it's the signed version, so, so that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's the one, right? That's a public record.
Yes.
And this is marked by Michelle as being received in our, in our meeting as a public record from Tony Locke.
November 5th.
This, this, this is dated 11/13/2023.
Commissioner North?
I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Frill?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Mill?
I'm going to keep that trend going.
Have anything either? We are adjourned, thank you.